Stop where it says video?
Start video.
And then, yeah, where you have the arrows up. Oh, now I can't tell you.
I'm sorry. I do apologize. I did just click the live button. We are live.
All right, you guys have to wait till later. I know Tony wants to know.
We don't want to share our secrets with the world.
All right, let's let's let these folks in since we're live on wherever we're live, Facebook. And?
And you should be good to go. You should be.
Thrilled to kick off this meeting. Are we ready, guys?
Ready.
Okay.
Ready, ready.
All right, so I have to put, I'm sorry, your guys are all evaporating because I had to put the agenda up. But this is the meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Situate. It is Tuesday, May 25th. We are now convening at 6:03 PM. And we are in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency, which still is in effect. The Town of Situate Public Meeting shall remain remote until further notice. This meeting is being recorded. It can be viewed live on Situate Community Television, Facebook, or you can participate via Zoom by, well, if you're listening to this, you probably figure out how to get on already. But it's on the the agenda posted on the town website. The recording of this meeting will be available tomorrow on Comcast Channel 9 and also on the YouTube Situate Community Television. And with those formalities, I will ask for an acceptance of the agenda, please.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. I saw you first. Because we are remote, all of our votes need to be taken by roll call. Lauren, you'll facilitate.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich. Mr. Goodrich.
Nodding.
Okay.
So we can't hear you, but we saw you nodding. The agenda is accepted 5-0. Just a couple of things before we go to Zoom and walk-ins. Mr. Bedrow, our town administrator, is on vacation this week, a well-deserved break. And so we will not be having our normal TAs report. But I would like to extend the board's deepest thanks and appreciation to Mr. Bedrow and to the entire public safety team that worked so professionally and diligently during the emergency out at the Spit this weekend. And it's tragic, the result, but it was reported to me by many, many sources that our team led the way in coordinating all of the response teams that came to town to try to help. So big thank you to them. Tonight, we will be having a short meeting, which is why we're meeting early. This is our annual meeting for reorganizing the board. And we do that after town elections. And we would like to congratulate our member, Mara Curran, for reelection to her third term on the Select Board. And thank you for your service to the town.
You. Thank you to the town.
Yay. We will not be reviewing the St. Patrick's Day Half Year Parade application. It will be postponed until, which is on our agenda at 6:30. It's postponed to our June 8th meeting. And the last two things, I just want to do a little shout out is obviously, it's Memorial Day in Situate this weekend. And on Monday at 10:00 AM, there will be a very robust program at the Situate High School football field, primarily to honor our vets and also to dedicate our new Missing in Action Chair that is being at the Chair of Honor that is at the field. And graduation will be on June 4th. So congratulations to all our seniors. So that was my, I took that privilege because I'm about to add one more thing to do, which is to invite any walk-ins or Zoom-ins. If you would like to address the board on a matter not on the agenda, you can hit Reactions, Raise Hand, simply put your video on and physically raise hand. We're not well attended today. So I see no Zoom or walk-ins. And that will bring us to our first, our other agenda, next agenda item, which is the reorganization of the Select Board. And as we do every year after the election, as I mentioned, we take this opportunity to to change up our leadership and 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 turn it over. I did not, I did not get a gavel this year because we were remote. So I brought my meat tenderizer, and I'm going to use it as my last act. And it has been my pleasure to work with all of you as your chair this past year. And I want to thank you all and especially our team at Town Hall, who really, we couldn't do our jobs without them. So Jim and Lorraine and Nancy, who's with us tonight, and Deb and Michelle, thank you for holding us up during what was an extremely challenging year. And with that, we will.
Madam Chair, before you go forward. May I have a second?
If only if I can use this. Okay.
So before we go and reorganize, I do want to just thank you for your time and dedication and just the great job you did as a chair this year. Your attention to detail, your passion, and absolute total commitment to the to the role of Chair of Selectmen was not overlooked by anybody, especially the five or the four of us in the rest of Town Hall. So you did an absolutely great job. You represented us all so well. And more importantly, you moved the ball forward on all the important agenda items that we're looking at, the initiatives that we're trying to do. And that's, that's really the measure of a good year, I think, where we, where we took the things that we wanted to do and moved to the next level. And you led that and you did that, and you're responsible for a lot of that. So thank you very much and congratulations on really a well-year served.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. I couldn't have done it without the support of all of you. So I do appreciate that.
Well, well said, Tony. And I'm just going to jump in and say you did a fabulous job, Karen. And like Tony said, you raised the bar for all of us. You represented us well. And I appreciate it. And every time we have a new chair, I learn something new. So it was great. And I think you should be really proud of the work that you accomplished. And I know you put in so many hours because you know how long it takes. So thank you. You did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Well, while we're, while we're at it, I'd also like to say that you conducted meetings with intelligence with grace and most of all, good humor. They're not easy to preside over, and sometimes things get tense. But you were always gracious, always respectful, and always had good things to say to move the conversations along. So I truly appreciate your leadership in running these meetings.
Thank you, Karen. My Nana would be very happy that you characterized me that way. All right, Andrew, you're off the hook. You're also muted, which is entertaining.
We are having a little difficulty with Mr. Goodrich.
He can't hear you, Andrew.
It would be fun to dub stuff in, though.
Well, I, how about now?
There you are. There you are.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for being not only so welcoming to the new guy, but also just the ability. For me, the measure of great leadership is also to be able to teach and teach in a way that is informative, but also, again, with good humor. And the ability to bring people along, it's just been a marvel to see. I really do appreciate it.
I'm glad I'm wearing red because you can't see how much I'm blushing. But thank you. I appreciate that. And I, it was a tough year. I am looking forward to passing off the meat tenderizer to the next person because it is a lot of work. And, you know, two of you have done it, I think, multiple times. And I now bow down to all of the work because it is a commitment. So with that, who are we going to talk into doing? Yeah, next. So we do need to reorg. And what we need is we will take nominations for our next chair, our vice chair, and our clerk. Those are our elected positions within the board. And I don't, I'm happy to kick off the conversation. I don't, if anyone else would like to. Mr. Vice Chair, maybe?
Yeah, I could, I'd like to make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Karen Conley as the new chair for the Board of Selectmen for the next year.
And we'll second that. We're fighting over her. We have a motion and a second by Ms. Curran. I will defer. Is there any discussion or comments? Did she run from the room?
She's still there, and I think she'll do a great job.
Yeah. That's great. All right. So we have a motion and a second. This matter requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. Congratulations, Madam Chair. I think from, at this moment, we would normally get up and change seats, which we can't do that. So I will gavel out because I've always wanted to do that. And I'll let you continue with the meeting, which is, the next item is the next two votes.
Do I hear a motion to appoint a vice chair?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would make a motion to nominate Ms. Canfield as the vice chair for the Board of Selectmen for the next year.
Second.
Second.
Am I allowed to second?
You are.
You can. All in. Further discussion?
Further discussion, sorry.
That's right, we're trading.
Do I hear, I heard a second. Roll call vote.
Okay.
Since we're remote, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Madam Chair, would you like a motion for the clerk?
I would, thank you.
Maura, how are you? I'd like to make a motion that Andrew Goodrich be the clerk for the Board of Selectmen for the next year.
Second.
Where did I see a second? Was that more, oh, second by Ms. Canfield? This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Elective me, yes.
It's already four.
We now have a clerk. Congratulations, Mr. Goodrich.
Ready for my clerical duties. Thank you.
All right, shall we move on to the next agenda item? It is discuss vote donations. The Situate Fire Department donation of $500. I think we have Mr. The Chief Murphy here. I saw him. I see him now.
He's here. Good evening.
Good evening.
Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
I have a sum full of $500,000 donations. It came in in memory of Miriam Minor. Miriam is, her daughter is Julie White and also Brad White's son-in-law. Brad has also been involved in the Situate Waterways Committee. And they made a donation of some of $500 to the Situate Fire Department request that the board gruesome. Select.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? No?
No, other than just thank, thank the family very much. It's a very generous donation. And Chief, I'm sure you'll find someplace good and useful to use it. So.
Yes, we will. We send our cards to everybody that donated, like the family. So we appreciate it.
Yes, we thank them very much. Do I hear a motion to accept the donation of $500 to the Situate Fire Department?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Canfield, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Curran. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Well.
And our second item is Situate Police Department donation of a refrigerator. Chief Thompson, I believe, is here. Chief.
Good evening and congratulations, Karen.
Thank you. That's all you have to say, Karen, right?
To both, I guess. Yes, thank you. So back again, I received a call in a very generous donation from the Blake family. This is a family who's been in town and is moving out of town now. But they have a refrigerator and they asked if they could donate it to us. They are big supporters of the Situate Police Department. And I think particularly as we're coming into the summer, it's something that the officers really appreciate as they're, they're doing their duties and getting hot. I'd like to be able to put some waters in there and make them available to people as they're coming off shifts and riding bikes and things. So we really appreciate the gesture from the Blake family and would like to be able to accept that donation of the refrigerator.
Thank you, Chief. That's very generous. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Just wonder where you're going to put it, Chief.
I think we'll be able to find a spot for it out in the El Building, which will be a great spot for the summer, as I say, as officers are coming in and out. When you wear those ballistic vests, it gets warm. So this is very timely.
Yes, the summer approach is always need another refrigerator. Thank you to the family. We appreciate it very much. Do I hear a motion to accept the generous donation of refrigerator to the Situate Police Department? Moved Mara, moved by Mara Curran, seconded by Andrew Goodrich. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Donation accepted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Knights of Columbus Carnival. I see Mr. Limbacher is here.
I think we have, I'm sorry, Karen, for interrupting, the Police Marine Unit Repowering Contract.
Oh, I got to change my glasses. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
Chief Thompson, didn't mean to skip over that.
That, that's okay. Thank you very much. Um, so yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Well, thank you. So at town meeting last year, the town approved a capital project for the repowering of the Police Marine Unit boat. We went out to a competitive bid and we had the result back in. Nancy, I'm sure can fill in some greater details. But subsequent to that bid process, we have a contract in place ready for your boat in the amount of $69,466 for Green Harbor Marina in Green Harbor, Mass., which would accomplish the repowering of Marine Unit in short order for us.
Very good. Do I hear any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Canfield?
Mark, I think it said that there was only one bid.
There was, there was only one bid. Only, only one company returned on this.
Do you think that's just a function of everyone slammed because there's so many boats? Or how comfortable are we that this is, this is the right thing to spend money on right now?
I think that it's, it's the season, but it's also the state of kind of the economy and supplies at this point. Resources are in scarce demand. So I think that for, for a lot of folks, they don't actually have the materials in place or in this case, motors and equipment in place to be able to fulfill the bid.
And they'll be able to get this done for the season?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion for a contract to be awarded to?
Move to award a contract to Green Harbor Marina of Green Harbor, Mass. in the amount of $69,466 for the repowering of the Police Marine Unit.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Vignani. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
So now we're moving to the Knights of Columbus Carnival with Mr. Limbacher and Mr. Brady. Mr. Limbacher, do I see you here?
We have Mr. Brady.
I'm here.
They're both here.
Oh, there's Mr. Brady. I saw Mr. Brady, but not his name. So, so who would like to speak first?
Is Bill there?
Well, his name is there, and I thought I saw him.
It's just on mute.
Yeah, mute.
Apparently.
I will ask him to unmute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are now.
Yeah, my family's discovered the mute button and they put it on me all the time. So whether I am or I'm not.
So tell us about the carnival. We're going to have it, huh?
Well, we've got, after sitting there spending what I thought was an unnatural amount of time reading about regulations in terms of how you control people coming in, control them going out and a lot of other things. Finally, when they opened it up, it's what, two weeks ago, Monday? They came back out and the restrictions that basically precluded you from having a carnival have all been lifted. So what we had done is we had put together a basic contract for a basic carnival, which is typically what we've put on for the last probably 40 years that I've been involved in it. And so we've basically made it as streamlined as we can so that we can come back up and go ahead and get, get your approval and go ahead and have the carnival.
Well, I think we're all looking forward to things getting back to normal. Does Mr. Brady have anything to add to that?
Um, no, not really. Just the dates, as you probably know, are July 13th through the 17th. I believe this is a 62nd, a third year, maybe one less because we didn't have it last year. But it's seven to 11 at night like it's always been. And we're just hoping for approval by you because we're looking forward to getting back to normal too and helping people in this town with our charitable donations, which have been very hindered over the last year or so.
Very good. Does the board have any questions, Mr. Vignani?
Hey, Mark, just a quick question. Is it going to be the same size as usual and are there going to be fireworks?
Size-wise, yes, it's going to be the same size as usual. Fireworks, Bill, that's Bill's thing, and he's been talking to him. I don't know if we're definite yet or not. Bill, you can probably answer that better.
No, we're in the process of finalizing an understanding with, with the fireworks people. So what we'd be, it's the same outfit that we've had for the last several years. American Thunder, a pretty professional organization. So we've been looking to keep, keep that and keep everything with fireworks the same. And as to the size, the footprint would be exactly the same.
Right. Thanks, guys.
Any other questions from the board, Maura, Karen?
I just have a couple. If we do, if you do move forward the fireworks, if you can just let us know so we can let our Veterans Council know as well because they've asked us to give them, you know, some preemptive notice when there are going to be fireworks in town. And then, secondly, our motion says the 12th. I just want to make sure, is it July 12th or July 13th, Mark?
The carnival runs the 13th through the 17th. 12th is the day they, they'll be on the lot.
Okay, got it. Perfect. Thank you. That's all.
Yes, Ms. Canfield?
I just wanted to make a comment that I really appreciate that you do this for my birthday every year. But also just, you know, the, the work, I don't know, I don't know how you went through the last year without having this event last summer. But we really appreciate the work that the Knights of Columbus does in the community. You're like styling unsung heroes. And, you know, I think all of the above would be, we're thrilled. I'll be down there. So it's great. Thank you for, for, I know you probably had to scurry around to make it happen. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Goodrich? Well, I guess it just shows you, after running something for 30 or 40 years, you've got to kind of cut it down, right?
Oh.
So do I hear a motion?
Move to approve a special event permit to William Limbacher for the Knights of Columbus Carnival from July 12th, 2021 to July 17th, 2021, with a setup on July 12th and a takedown on July 17th in Cole Parkway pending certificate of liability insurance and notification to the veterans if the, or to Town Hall if fireworks are to commence.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Curran. This requires a roll call vote. Rain?
She's muted.
I was muted. Sorry about that.
Oh, that's okay.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Ms. Curran.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0. We have a second motion, and this involves a special event fee waiver. This generates conversation almost every time we talk about it. I don't know if anyone has anything to say from the board.
Actually, this is Lorraine, if I could just interject for a moment. But the board voted on their policy for special event waiver fees because the Knights of Columbus is a nonprofit group, which you are, correct, Bill and Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, that they would only be charged a $25 fee rather than the $100 fee. And the board also voted that they would not be making any waivers. So it is a significant decrease in what the typical special event fee would be. Would you be okay with that, Mark and Bill?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
All right.
Therefore, I don't believe the board needs to vote on this matter.
Would someone like to amend the motion that we have?
I don't think we have to vote on.
No one made the motion.
It was a separate motion, so it doesn't even need to be.
Oh, all right. Sorry. Does someone want you to do a new motion? Because the motion we have is to waive the special event fee.
No, we don't, we don't need to vote on it. I think that we amended the fee structure so that it's not onerous and that if we're not waiving it, there's nothing to vote on.
Right.
All right.
So.
And I will, I will.
We want a fee of $25, please.
We'll work with, the Select Board's office will work with the Knights and any other of these groups on the special event fees.
Right.
As at the board's request from previous meeting.
So we don't have to make a motion to approve a $25 fee?
No.
No.
We already did all that.
Strike that, get rid of that motion. Okay, we're good. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, guys.
You send me, you send me a bill for that?
Sure, I'll be happy to.
So the next item on our agenda, I see what Karen has to do to go back and forth to the, to the agenda. The, we're not doing the St. Patrick's Day Parade, but we have someone here from the mine at the Fourth of July Parade on 7/4/21, I believe, April. Was it April?
Yes. Hi, I'm April Lynn. How are you? I'm the president of the North.
There she is.
Yes.
Would you like to tell us about the parade?
I'm the president of the North Situate Beach Improvement Association. We've been doing the parade for well over 30 years.
April, I have to interrupt you because I just realized I have to recuse myself, which means I have to go off mute and video.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Ms. Canfield is gone.
She is gone. So we've submitted our application for the special events permit. It's a parade on Fourth of July. It's a kids' bike parade. It's through Mine It. It starts on Collier Ave. It's a five-minute bike parade that goes up Glades, down Grasshopper, Damon, Gannett, Ocean, and back at Collier. We've submitted the, the map with our permit application. There's just, you know, maybe about 50 to 75 kids that, that attend. And we have requested that a fire truck lead off the parade if we could. He's done it and they've done it in the years past. We have also secured their certificate of liability insurance for $1 million, naming the Town of Situate in the waiver. So that is complete as well. So it's Fourth of July at 10:00 AM.
Any comments from the board or questions?
Great event.
Excuse me, Mr. Vignani?
Just saying, great event.
Yep. Anyone else? Glad we can do it this year.
I know.
Would you like a motion, Madam Chair?
Yes, please. Thank you. Move to approve the special event permit to Katie Ross on behalf of the North Situate Beach Improvement Association's Mine It July 4th, 2021 Children's Parade to celebrate Independence Day. The setup on July 4th will be at 9:30 with the parade beginning at 10:00 AM and ending at approximately 11:20 AM, pending a certificate of liability insurance and special event fee.
Do I hear a second? Second by Mr. Vignani. This requires a roll, roll call vote.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Canfield is abstaining. Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it. That's great. All right, moving on to our next agenda item, we have discuss vote, a municipal employee disclosure. Freya Schlegel from the Water Resources Commission. Freya, I understand that you've got a, a small business and you're, because of your participation on the Water Resources Commission, you needed to check with the state you needed to check with the state and file a disclosure statement to make sure that there's no conflict of interest. Would you like to tell us about what you're doing and if the board has any questions for Freya?
Um, absolutely. Thank you. Um, I do have a small business. I'm a massage therapist. But um, I've been working with the Water Resource Committee for the last six months. And I want to thank you all for appointing me to that committee. We've been doing a ton of good work since um, I got on there first, starting with the um, researching and writing the outdoor water use bylaw that we just passed at town meeting in April. Um, we're now working on a save the water, um, save water Situate campaign, which is um, a QR code, a video campaign, and we did the rain barrels, which was a huge success at the dump. Um, I don't know if it was a month ago now. Um, and being on the Water Resources Committee, I don't want to be a super user. So after we got the rain barrels, I was like, I need more rain barrels. So I found um, a girl in Dedham who sources barrels and was like, I could make rain barrels out of these. Um, and I had been, and sorry, my dog is freaking out at something. I hope you can still hear me. Um, I had been in touch with Carla Shea, who is running the Situate Farmers Market. And she had asked me um, if there was anyone who I knew who would sell rain barrels. And I thought, well, these were pretty easy to make. Why don't I sell them at the farmers market? And have um, our QR code freshly minted there linking to um, the Water Resource website. And basically spending three hours um, every Wednesday educating the town on saving water, on, you know, water reuse, any of the programs that we're working on in the committee. But I was advised by my friend who is a lawyer that I file a disclosure statement with the town clerk because there's a potential that I could make a few dollars selling these rain barrels. So I'll be funding all of this with my own personal funds, certainly not quitting my day job. But I would like this opportunity to um, to reach the community and to educate people. And that's my stick.
Okay, any questions from the board, comments? Yes, Maura?
Um, Freya, thank you. That's an awesome initiative. Um, what are the rain, I'm just curious, what material are the rain barrels made of?
Um, so they're food-grade plastic barrels. Um, the guy imports pepperchini's from Italy or Greece.
And Tony?
Somewhere in the area. And um, I'm basically spray painting them, putting screens on them, knobs. And hopefully getting people to use them. I figure every fifty-gallon barrel, you know, saves fifty gallons of highly chlorinated fluorinated water going um, onto grass.
No, thank you. It sounds great. And thanks for um, filing the disclosure. So smart. You're a smart businesswoman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, it's better to err on the side of caution. Yes, Ms. Canfield?
Yep, Freya. First off, your video was awesome about how to use one. I got my, my first one this year. I was so excited. Because I got closed out last year. So I think it'd be a great addition to the, um, to the farmer's market. So, thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, this is like the perfect type of initiative that we want people to do of, you know, trying to help. I mean, it's, we're talking small business. We're talking about helping the environment. Uh, and also if anyone got one of those, the brown ones before, they were already, you could smell the oil. From when we, when we sold them, you could smell the olive oil and it's amazing that they can resell and they redo. It's amazing. Uh, so I think it's fabulous all around and just congratulations. It's a big success.
Thank you.
So, Freya, did you include any financial um, projections as to what this might entail in terms of profit to you?
No, I think it's probably, um, it depends. So we've just started making them and we're, you know, sourcing our materials. Um, it'll probably be, work out to be maybe nine to $20 um, profit. So we'll make like $9 an hour doing it. I mean, it's certainly way less than what I charge for a massage.
What? Yeah. Well, the only reason I ask is because we are being, the select board is required to review the matter. And it says that we've determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services, which the municipality may expect. So um, I don't know what exactly that means in terms of what is considered substantial, but that's what we're voting.
Okay, I mean, I could, I don't have them for you. I had a spreadsheet on my husband's computer, but he's golfing right now. So, I mean, it's not a lot of money at all. Um, but I can certainly look at that for you if you would like it.
Well, it, it, Freya, do you think you might make a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars? The, the reason I'm asking is because this motion is very specific about us saying that we reviewed the, the finances and are satisfied as a board that it's not substantial.
Sure. Um, I'm hoping, you know, depending on how many we sell, we might be able to go out to dinner at the Salt Society. Like it's.
Oh, that's pretty expensive. Having more to take up.
Selling maybe twenty barrels.
So you think you might sell twenty? Okay.
I, I have no idea. I mean, I know people want them. I know people have been asking me where to find them. I um, have been trying to talk to um, Matt down at the hardware store in the harbor to carry a couple barrels. Because again, if you see them, maybe you'll buy them, maybe you'll think about buying them. Um, you know, if I told somebody online today, she's like, where do I get a barrel? And I'm like, go to Lowe's, go to Home Depot, buy on Amazon, whatever. Um, you know, if it happened to be right at the farmer's market when you're buying your honey and carrots, maybe, maybe you'd consider buying it or at least think about it. And, and honestly, get access to the information that we have on our, our webpage to, to think about water conservation.
Yes, Mr. Vagnani?
Yeah, just a quick question, Freya. Is this going to have any impact on your ability to serve on the Water Resource Committee?
I couldn't imagine. I'm going to be attempting to educate um, the people about saving water.
Right, and you're not, and, and you're selling this as a private person, not as a member of the Water Resource Committee, right?
Correct.
Great. Like a motion?
Yes.
I move the, I move that select board, as required by Massachusetts General law, Chapter 268A, has reviewed the particular matter as outlined by Freya Schlegel, a non-elected appointed board member who serves on the Water Resource Commission to sell rain barrels. We have determined that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed, deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which a municipality may expect from the board member.
Second, Ms. Canfield? This requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Absolutely.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck, Freya. Good night. All right. Back to the agenda. Um, the next on the agenda is a discuss vote, bulk soda ash contract. Warden and Remington Corporation not to exceed $390,000. Uh, I have Kevin Cafferty here. I'm not sure I see him, but I know that Nancy is here. So who is going to address this contract?
I can address it, Madam Sheriff, if that's all right with you.
That's fine.
Um, you're probably going to see a few more of these annually, the DPW awards contracts for the treatment of water as well as the treatment of effluent. Um, and this one is, is for, I can't remember which one this is for. This is for effluent, I believe. Um, and this would provide soda ash, bulk soda ash. Um, and the not to exceed a $390,000 is, um, we probably won't even exceed $150,000, but they just wanted to hedge their bets and make sure that they were all right. And the procurement was through the Eastern Mass Cooperative bid. So as I said, you'll probably see a few more of these over the next few meetings as they award more contracts.
All right. Does the board have any questions? I know we've seen these types of contracts before. Nope, no questions. Do I hear a motion?
Give you one. Uh, move, uh, move toward the contract of Warden and Remington Corporation to provide bulk soda ash in the amount not to exceed $390,000 for up to three years.
Do I see a second? Second, oh, second, Ms. Canfield, Canfield, thank you. This requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Motion carries. Uh, the next item on our agenda is to discuss vote, execute purchase and sales agreement, Cowings Cove. I believe Karen Canfield is going to handle this. This was approved um, at town meeting. And we are simply signing the documents. Ms. Canfield?
That's exactly what I was going to say. So.
All right.
Presented as Article, I think, 29. Um, and it was, it's essentially a donation from Maxwell Trust to protect the watershed. And um, the purchase price covers their legal fees for the transaction. And it was as, as Chair has pointed out, it was approved unanimously at town meeting.
Does anyone on the board have any questions about this? Seeing none. Uh, this requires a roll call vote.
We need a motion.
Did I have a second?
First, let's do the motion. I move to execute the purchase and sale agreement for Cowings Cove as voted and approved on April 12th, um, 2021 at the annual town meeting.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Vagnani. This requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. On to the next item, uh, which is new business. Uh, to discuss vote a Hocker peddler license renewal for known as ice cream.
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please.
Move that select board approve to renew Hocker peddler license for known as ice cream, known as homemade, sorry, Inc., for the 2021 season.
Before I get a second, any questions? No, a second? Second by Ms. Karen. A roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Definitely, yes.
Those, can't wait for more ice cream, right? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the, to discuss vote, a drain layers license renewal for Walsh Management. Does anyone have any questions about this? I don't see any. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve renewals of drain layers licenses for Walsh Management.
Thank you, Ms. Canfield. Any, a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Vagnani. Sorry, Andrew. All right, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, the next item on our agenda is discuss vote, board and committee appointments, the Animal Control Board. Um, I guess I can explain that currently the Animal Control Board does not have a full board. I believe, Lorraine, is there one member left?
Correct.
And we need to have three people to have a quorum. I believe it's a five-member board?
Correct.
Okay, so we need to appoint two people to that uh, Animal Control Board this evening. Um, the animal control officer has had a complaint about a dog. And they need to have a hearing and the hearing needs to be held by the Animal Control Board. Uh, despite the uh, Selectmen's Office best efforts to find citizens to volunteer to be on this particular board, we have been unable to do so. And given the fact that we have to have this hearing, we need to have um, a board with a quorum. Uh, so we do have two people that we would like to appoint tonight. Um, and these appointments can certainly be, um, until we find citizens of the town to volunteer to do this. So because we don't, we don't have current volunteers, uh, Mr. Boudreau and Mr. Cafferty have volunteered to serve on this board. Does anyone have any questions about that? Yes, Ms. Karen?
I do. Um, Karen, who's the sitting member on the Animal Control Board today?
Carol Sullivan. Carol Sullivan Hanley, and she's never participated in an Animal Control Board meeting to date.
Lorraine, have we had many of those meetings?
No.
Yeah.
When Kim Stewart left, everybody on the board resigned, basically.
So we need to do some work to get this board, you know.
Yeah, I've advertised it.
Yeah.
The past two years, but.
Yeah, yeah.
All you animal lovers out there.
Well.
Board members.
Yeah, Ms. I agree. Um, Ms. Canfield?
Uh, I, I guess this question for Lorraine, does Ms. Hanley know that there's a pending hearing yet?
I, I've left all that in Frank's hands. I've given him.
Oh, okay.
Frank Keith.
Yep.
Uh, since he would be responsible for that.
Yeah, well, she's, she's a, she's a wonderful person to have on that list.
Yes, she is.
Well, you know, hopefully we can appeal to her because it's, it, time is of the essence to have this hearing. And if, if I could editorialize that, you know, I know it's a difficult decision to make about a dog. But uh, the Animal Control Board is not the final say. They, they vote. And if they vote to, we're no longer allowed to send a dog out of town. So that option is gone. Uh, there are other options in terms of muzzling the dog, keeping the dog on leash, keeping the dog on property, et cetera, et cetera. But this particular situation has risen to the level of the animal control officer feels that this dog is potentially a danger to other people. The Animal Control Board has to vote on this. They have to either, they can vote to have the dog put down. I think we're all animal lovers and I don't think anyone relishes that thought. However, um, there is an appeals process, so it's not just up to the Animal Control Board. But it's up to their, to them to use their judgment as to how they really feel about the situation. It then can be appealed to the Board of Selectmen. And then from there, I believe it gets appealed, it could be appealed to a district court judge if I read it correctly. So it's not the end of the road, but people, we need someone to step up and, and help us through this particular situation. So I hope we can appeal to Ms. Hanley to continue on. And if we can't, we'll be back here at the next meeting with another um, member of the board, so they can expedite this hearing. Any questions, comments from the board?
No, thank you for that appeal overview. Okay.
Karen, the only thing I'd add is, is the members, they really don't meet that often.
Right.
You know, so it's really maybe a couple of times a year. Um, it is a sensitive issue usually when you meet because there's some sort of situation, but it's really not a very time soon.
Well, and frankly, the, the bylaw about the whole animal control situation is about one of the longest bylaws that we have. So there's a lot spelled out, but um, I don't think that uh, not having a board is shirking our responsibilities at town. So we have to have it and I'm appealing to all the good citizens and especially to the, to people who love animals to, um, you know, to help us in this situation. And I, I know that Mr. Boudreau said he hasn't heard one of these situations in many, many years. So it's not like it comes up often, but when it does, it's our responsibility to deal with the situation. So. Anyone else? Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Cafferty and Mr. Boudreau to the Animal Control Board?
Move to appoint Jim Boudreau and Kevin Cafferty for a term of three years or until successors are named and the completion of the Conflict of Interest Law and online training program is completed within thirty days.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Canfield? This requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
Um, I, I'd like to add, if anyone had a question as to whether people who don't live in town can serve on our boards, the answer is they can. It's not common, but they can. All right.
Thank you, Jim McCafferty, for stepping up and filling that to get this done.
Yes, we greatly appreciate it. Um, the next item is discuss vote, one-day wine and malt licenses um, for Black Apron at the Situate Maritime Center on 6/5 from 10:00 PM to 2:00 PM for a private event. Should we do these separately, Lorraine, or can we do them all at once?
I think you can do the two of them together if you'd like.
Okay. Um, for Ellen McKenzie at the Situate Maritime Center on 5/28 from.
25, tonight, actually.
I'm sorry, 5/25, sorry. Like I said, new glasses, 5/25, uh, from 8 to 10:30 PM and that's it, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
For that particular motion, yes.
All right. Does anyone have any questions? Nope. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So move. Oh, okay.
Second? Second, second by Ms. Karen. All in, uh, this requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Motion to carry. Um, on to other business.
I'm sorry, Karen, before you go to other business, we also have our annual uh, emergency one-day wine and malt license.
Okay, that's what that meant. Sorry, I saw the second and I was like.
Sure, I understand. Yeah. Sure, I understand. Yeah.
Yes, okay. So I I could, I can explain that um upon occasion, we need to grant a malt or a wine license to people who have, uh, usually it's for funeral, uh, reception after the funeral. And needless to say, those things aren't anticipated mostly. So um, we need to have some licenses available so that we can grant those licenses in the case of a, you know, an emergency. Is that right, Lorraine?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So does anyone have any questions, comments?
No.
No, motion? Yes, please.
Move to approve 10 blanket emergency one-day beer and wine licenses for events at town of Situate locations.
All right, second? Second by Mr. Vagnani. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Other business liaison reports. Has anyone been liaising lately? No, I guess we're all just celebrating the winding down of the pandemic. All right.
Actually, I've been liaising, but um I'll just tell you, I what something that came up, um, Madam Chair, this week at the Affordable Housing Trust is that there is a potential buyer for the property um on the corner there at the Rotary on the Driftway. Um, and the planning board has asked them, um, you know, they want to obviously put in affordable units, and the Affordable Housing Trust does own property over on Stockbridge Lane. That's been um, a lot of utilities have been brought in by a previous developer years ago. So we've had a hard time getting folks to use that. So we will be working with the planning board to better understand, um, you know, the circumstances and what we can offer, but I think it's a good opportunity for us to add some additional affordable units over at that lot and um stay tuned for that to come. It's it's in front of the planning board and whatnot, but it also came in front of us. So pretty excited to have at least a couple more units added.
So the units would be done in um exchange for the developed, the the ability to develop the property. They would be developing two units down on Stockbridge Road or two or three, whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Maura, where is that exactly?
Uh, the empty, yeah, the empty office building right there at Driftway by the Rotary.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah.
So, but that's not owned by the Affordable? I'm sorry.
No, no, no. The developer is looking to divi- buy and develop that land, but probably as a mitigation piece to something else. They've asked for affordable housing units, and the developer has said um that they need to do that off-site, and we have a site that we own um as a part of the Affordable Housing Trust that we could accommodate such construction.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Do you know what's going to go? Is it is it housing that's going to go on the Driftway there?
That's the plan. I know. I think it's about 20 units.
Wow.
Really?
And those would be non-affordable units, Maura?
Correct.
Yeah.
On that spot with the parking lot right by the roof of shit?
Not.
20 units.
Wow. Wow.
So, yeah, the planning board I haven't seen, I haven't seen any plans at all that in in nothing, you know, it's in front of the planning board right now.
And it's not mixed use. It's just
I don't, I don't think so, Tony. I haven't seen anything and
Okay, sorry, I
Yeah.
Just surprised.
But I don't think, I don't, I don't want to misspeak because I I I don't know.
All right. Any other liaison reports? Nope, seeing none. Um, Mr. Clark, correspondence. And the the former clerk would like to apologize that the last meeting, I didn't have the backup, and it was my own fault for a variety of reasons. So I didn't realize there was some correspondence that I did, I missed. So my mea culpa, and um I don't know if you've got those pieces that I missed, but um, if you let us know what you've got.
I'll I'll just let you know what I have.
Okay.
So that, so number one, we had a nice letter from the Cedar Point Association uh, and our, and Dave Ball talking about some of the donations that they've done around town, uh, over $4,000 and in 2019, almost $4,000 last year, and they're on pace for at least $1,000 on various projects uh all around uh the Lighthouse and Hart Park, uh, and just letting us know that they're doing um that around uh the area. So that was very nice. Uh, the Friends of North of North Situus uh signed a letter to uh all of us uh talking about the need for sewer in North Situus and asking us to make that the number one priority uh for the board, and they're asking uh the Select Board and the Planning Board uh to do everything that they can uh for sewer in that area. Also, uh, just, uh, I think this is the general uh Kilios and MBTA letting people people know they'll be weed-in on the so there won't be any weeds sticking out when you go on the train. Which is pretty, pretty basic. I don't think I need to go too deep into that. The Situate Veterans Advisory Council, um, just again, letting people know, Situate High School, Monday, May 21st, 10:00 AM for the unveiling of the Chair of Honor. Again, 10:00 AM at the high school football field. That's for the Chair of Honor.
What's the date, Andrew? I'm sorry.
Monday, May 31st.
And I I believe there are no restrictions on the size of the crowd, so, you know, it might be the first time people have an opportunity to get out there and um, especially Memorial Day is a really important day and um to honor those people who gave their lives in service to this country and the and the armed services. So um, if we could have that be as big a crowd as we can make it, I think uh, I know the Veterans Advisory Committee would greatly appreciate it, so.
Andrew.
And Madam Chair, I think it's worth pointing out, too, that there won't be a ceremony at the Common, correct? This is in place of that, just so folks go to the right area. This, it's it's a little bit different this year. Yeah.
Yes, the Chair of Honor has been installed, but now we're taking the opportunity to um to dedicate it, and frankly, the the plans were all made prior to the governor suddenly lifting everything. So I think that they just wanted to keep with this plan, and because the chair had not yet been dedicated, this was the ideal opportunity to do it.
Excellent.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, uh, just two more, two more.
Yes.
A lovely email from uh Donna uh Bangor from the ship, she's the Shipshape Day Coordinator, folks at home. Uh, it just wants, she wanted to give um just some real nice thanks to Drew uh and Kathy Gardner, Seth Pfeiffer, Michelle and Lorraine, uh, Pat Kelly over at the transfer station, and Lucia, uh, and Tom, who's that, Tom Graham, and all the different volunteers for helping out Cheap Shipshape Day. I said that wrong. Don't censor me. Shipshape Day. And it was just very nice, just thanking everyone for the great job that they did. And then finally, but certainly not last, uh, Michael Gibbons, Chairman Gibbons from the Waterways, just wanted to let uh, folks know that there was uh, the April 7th meeting, they discussed uh dredging the South River, and they just, they have decided at this point, they do not want to proceed further with more discussions of dred- of dredging. And but they will keep talking to Marshfield about the subject, but just let us know that they voted uh not to proceed further with dredging. And that's
Right, I'm sure that will be a discussion sometime, somehow.
Yes.
All right.
That's all.
Anyone have any questions or comments about our correspondence?
Well, Mr. Clark.
Very good at that. Very much. I told you it was a fun job. Um, the next item on our agenda is to approve meeting minutes of May 11th. Do I have, are there any comments, questions, corrections on the minutes? Don't see anybody. Uh, do I have a motion?
Move to set up the meeting minutes for the Select Board meeting held on May 11th, 2021.
Do I hear a second? Ms. Canfield, thank you. This requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. And that is it on our agenda. Um
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I, may I just, um, because I didn't get a chance to do it at the beginning of the meeting, may I just make a comment?
Sure.
Do you mind? I just wanted to um thank the voters for coming out on Saturday. I know Karen did an overall thank. Thank you for everyone, but I just wanted to say thank you for those that came out and um supported me. I look forward to continuing for the next three years and working with my colleagues here to continue to move things forward. So I just want to say thank you. I'm very honored to continue to serve, and um that was it. I just wanted to make sure I I said that publicly to everyone.
Very good. Maura, is this your third term or fourth?
Yes, third.
Third, okay. So um, I want to thank you personally for volunteering to do it again, and um it's a commitment at any rate. Well, if we don't have any other business, if no one has anything else they'd like to add, uh, do I hear a motion to adjourn? And sign documents? Move by Ms. Can't, uh, Ms. Karen, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Did I see your hand or Mr. Vagnani?
Say it, whatever.
All right. I believe that was seconded by Mr. Vagnani, um, Lorraine. Uh, this requires a roll call vote?
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Vagnani?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. A reminder to go into Town Hall to sign documents, correct, Lorraine?
You know what? I'm going to bring them to you tonight.
Oh, all right.
So nobody has to come in.
Bring them.
You win the record.
Make it a little easier for you, and I think this is a record. Yes.
Yeah, I do, too.
Good job.
Well, I I want to thank whoever made it such a light agenda.
You're welcome.
We were going to discuss sewer rates tonight. We would have been here until midnight, so.
So we moved
Jim's probably very sad that he missed this very quick meeting.
I'm sure he is.
I'm sure he watched.
All right, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.